Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council being held on Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. And it's on a Tuesday because we celebrated President's Day yesterday. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, March 4th, 2019 at 7:30. Now, before I have you call the roll, I'll announce now that Mr. Cavan called me just before I left for the State of the City address by the mayor. And he is deathly ill, and his wife convinced him not to spread it to all the people here. So, at least, his wife was smart enough to avert maybe an epidemic, because there's a lot of people in this room tonight. So, that being said, would you please call the roll, Mr. Polo?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan. Captain. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Well, we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You probably have noticed there is a number of police officers here. That's because Chief Fisher has a couple awards to present. So, without further ado, Chief Fisher, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the first award we'll do is the surprise award. She doesn't know she's getting an award, but she's here tonight, so we'll give it to her anyway. This is a life-saving award. Patrolman Telquist was nominated by Sergeant Bartolik. On January 26th, 2019, you were dispatched to Scottsdale Place Apartments to a suicide-attempted overdose complaint. You responded to find a female victim who appeared to be deceased. You immediately went to the victim, began to administer life-saving measures. You began to perform chest compressions and monitored the subject's vitals until you could feel a pulse. The victim was able to be revived and even sat up at one point and asked what happened. When she did that, fire department personnel who arrived on scene to take care of the victim told her, quote, "This officer just saved your life." You are to be commended for your quick actions and calm demeanor during this situation, and your actions are in keeping with the highest tradition of law enforcement in the Worcester Police Department. It's with great pleasure that I award you the Worcester Police Department's Life Saving Award. Congrats on the job. Well done. That was the surprise award, Mr. President. She didn't know that was coming. Where's Patrolman Barry? Shane, step up here, please. So, we're here tonight, and it's my pleasure to introduce the 2018 Worcester Police Department Officer of the Year, Shane Barry. Shane was nominated by three different supervisors for this award. I won't read each of the letters. Instead, I just put some highlights together of those letters. Some of the highlights of those are Patrolman Barry is always looking to stop vehicles and enforce drug laws. He comes to work with a positive attitude, a contagious laugh, and a great sense of humor. He's one of the most productive members of the department and aggressively combats the drug problems in the city. He's played a key role in bringing multiple charges against one of the biggest drug dealers in the city. He's a leader, a team player, and is always willing to assist his peers. He's participated in addressing the homeless issues downtown, and he displays humility and humanity towards the public, always offering to help or give advice, and he treats them with dignity and respect. Patrolman Barry is a solid officer who displays a strong work ethic and takes pride in his work. He has an extraordinary initiative, especially in the area of drug enforcement. He exemplifies the old adage of "shower them with kindness," more than any officer I have worked with. He never shies away from a challenge. And these were my two favorites from Sergeant Bartolik. So, those of us that worked with Sergeant Bartolik, you know, Clint. Quote, "He is not a big guy, but fearless nonetheless." And nobody's big next to Clint, so... And my personal favorite, "If only we could get him to write everything that he does down, this would have been a longer nomination letter." All that said, congratulations to Shane Barry, our 2018 Worcester Police Officer of the Year. So, here's your chance to make a speech if you want to.
I'm just going to thank my family for supporting me and dealing with this hectic schedule and everybody I've worked with, like, there are a couple squads, and without them, this wouldn't have happened. So, thanks, guys. Thanks, family.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, congratulations to you both, and you must be well thought of for the number of officers to come on their time off to see you get these awards. So, congratulations, and it's people like you that make this a wonderful city to live in. Thank you, Chief. You are dismissed. Moving along on the agenda, I would seek a motion to approve the minutes of the February 4th, 2019 council meeting. Motion to approve by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Silvestri seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of February 4th are approved. Well, Mayor, I don't know if you have much more to say than since your State of the City address, but welcome, and we appreciated the presentation and the speech that went with it. And it looks like going into 2019, the city's in good hands and on firm ground. So, turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke, but actually, I think I talked myself out here. I am very happy for our police officers that are doing great jobs, and that was a very nice presentation by the chief, celebrating the good people working for our city. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
All right. We do have one petition. It's for a liquor license, a D-5L. And if you would please read it, Mr. Polo, I'd appreciate it.
A petition from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, A Time to Craft LLC, 149 North Walnut Street, first floor only, Worcester, Ohio 44691. It's a transfer from a company called A Brush and a Beverage LLC at the same location. And they're asking for a D-5L.
Yeah, and that's on the corner of North and Walnut Street, just up from my office. And I understand from my source that it's going to have kind of the same type of thing, where some sort of an artistic bent, and, you know, enjoy some wine or something while you're creating. As you may know, that we can either ask for a hearing on this petition here in Wayne County, or one down in Columbus, or we can waive a hearing. So, what's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel, and a second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the roll on the waiver of the hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
All right. If you would do so, please, Mr. Polo, send a notice to the Department of Liquor Control that we are waiving any hearing. No one signed up to speak tonight, so we'll roll in the committee reports and public hearings, and there are none of that, so we go to unfinished business. This is the third reading of ordinance number 2019, day 01, but it's my understanding that Mr. Sanders will ask to table this until further notice. Before we get to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask Mr. Polo to please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 201901, an ordinance amending Part 11, planning and zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to R4 multifamily residential for property located on West Milltown Road.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, at the request of the applicant, motion to table ordinance 2019, day 01.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Motion to table it by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers, would you please call the roll on the motion to table?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
It'll be tabled, and just to refresh my memory, once it's tabled, it has a year before it would expire, so any time within a year, it can be moved to come off the table and voted on. So, we will consider ordinance number 2019, day 01, as having been tabled. Now, allow us to look at new business. The first one is ordinance number 2019, day 05. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Polo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 201905, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with MVAH Development LLC for community reinvestment area tax incentives.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This coincides with the mayor's State of the City address regarding affordable housing in the city of Worcester, so it's a very timely initiative indeed. However, I will say, hopefully, the third time is the charm, because this will be the third time that through the CRA request through those channels, we've opted for this property to be a candidate for federal housing tax credits. So, this deal will be contingent upon them securing the appropriate tax credits, but it is a formidable, incredible development coordinated by Miller Valentine, of which the city has a great track record of success with the Palm House Apartment Community Complex. So, we have seen the conceptual designs. It looks to be very promising, and tonight's legislation is to request council's approval to allow the mayor to enter into an official agreement with MVAH Developments LLC for 50% tax abatement, 12-year, part of the Community Reinvestment Area Property Tax Abatement Program. It'll be 61 units. It'll have two full-time jobs, and again, it will be contingent upon securing the federal tax grants, as I previously highlighted. It is a competitive package. The apartments will also include moderate in income household applicants earning under $52,400 annually, or an individual earning under $36,700 annually. So, it really does hit a hotspot within the market for affordable housing, and it's certainly in an industrial corridor within our community to service those expanding manufacturing job opportunities, and it coincides with the wage, you know, ranges that will be offered by those industries. So, the reference, just as a point, that's always noteworthy, is currently the tax obligation on that parcel, and this is highlighted in the application request completed by Jonathan Malley, is $3,897 for the parcel. With the 50% abatement request for the first 12 years, depending on the level of investment, $5 million to about $7.5 million, it'll range from $53,000 to $81,000. And then, after the 12-year abatement period, it will generate between $100 and $155,000 of additional real estate property tax revenues to the city. So, without further ado, timing is of the essence on this, because it does allow the application to be submitted and approved, and with those fast-track approval process, they do score higher points on the federal housing tax credit application. The developer is not able to be here this evening, and hopefully, that won't be an issue. They had a prior commitment in Cincinnati, but they have authorized Jonathan Malley to answer any questions that we might have regarding this particular application. Yes, Mr. Bastancic?
Thank you. I think this is a great project, and I look forward to voting for it, but I do have a question. When I was talking to you earlier, Jonathan, I knew there was something I was forgetting. But in your CRA request summary, the below-market rates, it says, will only be available through the duration of the abatement period and a period around there? So, at some point, they could stop with the below-market rate?
The developer would have the ability to do that. That doesn't necessarily mean that they will. So, as part of receiving the housing tax credits, they're obligated for a certain number of decades to maintain the unit as available for affordable income. After a certain period of time, though, typically, it's a matter of several decades, that obligation falls off. And given the quality, the only reason we mention it is given the quality that goes into these structures. A lot of times, some other developers have decided to make that a market-rate apartment after it rolls off its obligation period, because the high quality makes it conducive to that. So, I just wanted to highlight, it wasn't in perpetuity, but for the next several decades, it will be made available to low-income.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Jonathan is... Thank you. This particular development is not going to take advantage of Wayne Metro Housing Authority, is that correct? Or vice versa?
Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority had previously partnered with this firm. They are not a party to this project. It is possible that the developer could partner with Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority in some of its subsidy programs, but 100% of the management, 100% of the tenant selection will rest with the company.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Warden, that's a very good point, because the last one was a joint application. So, yeah, this is a separate deal. Any other questions? Seeing none, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and move ordinance 2019-05 to third and final reading this evening, Mr. President.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Ansel to suspend the rules is...
Second?
There's a second? Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any last questions, comments? Mr. Malley's all primed to answer.
Yeah, I do have a question. We just received this in this week's packet, but yet, we need to have approval by the 20th. Where has this thing been setting that we need to move this along so quickly?
As far as the process goes, we had shared with council, once this had been made, once the application had been provided, we shared that information. As far as why we didn't have that application beforehand, that would go back to the developer's schedule. So, the opportunity came up, and the metrics appeared as though that Worcester would be very successful, had been able to secure the funding for the tax credits, and then they moved ahead with that application, at which time we shared with the school district council at that particular time. And Worcester Growth also had to rule on this before we bring in two councils to get the CRA, and so we had to build it into Worcester Growth's schedule also. So, that's something that they share with Mr. Sanders.
Being sensitive to Mr. Sanders' concerns, I too asked a similar question, but again, this is the third time that this very similar development proposal has been earmarked for that property. So, recognizing that it passed two times prior, it didn't have that concern this go around, and it's a very credible developer. So, you know, we've been dealing with this thing for about five years now, on and off, and hopefully, again, let's keep our fingers crossed.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Silvestri?
I didn't see any specific numbers breaking down the different units. I know it's low to moderate income. I know some of the other projects that we've seen, or proposals that we've seen, have a certain mixture of those. Do you want to speak to that, maybe?
My understanding is that at least 40 to 50 of those units will be committed to low-to-mid income use. As far as the actual makeup of the number of one veterans, two veterans, three veterans, I believe that that's still in design.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
No.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
5-1, does that pass on a...
It should, because you had six people to go to their final, and so you'd only need a majority to pass it.
All right. Just double-checking, so we will consider this to have passed, and ordinance number 2019, day 05, will go forward. That brings us to resolution number 2019, day 16, which will be presented by Mr. Sanders. In fact, it'll be the Mr. Sanders Show from here on out, because he's going to substitute for Mr. Cavan. If you would, Mr. Polo, please read the title.
Resolution number 2019-16, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept and apply grant monies from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, program, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Assistant Chief Rotolo has applied for a bind JAG grant to pay 75% of the cost of an active shooter patrol response kit for officers. The kit consists of two Level 4 plates that will stop a rifle round, as the current soft armor will not, an external carrier for the plate that will be worn over the soft-body armor, a Level 3A ballistic helmet, and a carry case that the officer can have this equipment with him while on duty. The total cost of all this equipment and shipping is $31,515. The grant will cover $23,626 of it. So, for us, we're ultimately responsible roughly, well, $7,878, and at that point, that's a pretty good return on investment. And I also, I guess, also turnover for... Assistant Chief Rotolo has anything additional to add to that? Please feel free.
I do. President Biden-Dyke, fellow members of council, I appreciate you giving me a second to talk about this. One of the expectations that Chief Fisher has of me is just to write grants and to provide equipment to the officers that's going to ultimately protect them. Right now, the equipment that we have, and we're expected to run into a dangerous situation, will not stop a rifle round. If we have an active shooter-type situation, we don't have the appropriate equipment to ultimately save our lives. This equipment has the potential to do that. The external carrier and plates can go with the officer. They're not going to be worn at all times, but it's something where if we do get into a situation where it's needed, they can actually put it on over their existing body armor. Perry Protech actually provided me with a sample, if you guys would like to see it. If you hold it, use two hands, that vest is pretty heavy, as each one of those plates weighs about eight pounds. Just unbelievably vital equipment that we have needed for a long time, and I'm really excited for the opportunity to present this to you guys and ask for your blessing in accepting 75% of the cost in this. God forbid we ever have to use it. It's good to have. Does anybody have any questions about it? I'll be glad to answer it. I did quite a bit of research when I was writing the grant. The feds like to have numbers and all the background, so please feel free to ask any questions that you may have. The helmet will actually be black and won't have some of that stuff that's on the outside of it. That was just what they could send me. And yes, most of the external carriers will be a little bit bigger than that one. They sent that one that would fit me, so I've had some of my officers look at it and go, "I hope we're going to get bigger sizes." So, but yeah, it's phenomenally quick.
Nice job on the application for the grant funds. It's well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional questions? Is that what... Oh. Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, that one thing. The match is paid from the Lawn Corps Fund, which is from the sale of contraband, so it's the matches on a tax dog, it's actual contraband, it's sold.
Our local neighborhood drug dealers pay for it. Can't beat that.
We're grateful for their contributions.
I agree, Mr. Silvestri, you're absolutely right.
Could I say something, Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
As a participant in the Citizens Police Academy this year, I have been fortunate enough to see firsthand how some of this equipment, how it benefits our amazing police force. And I'll say, if you think that vest is heavy, I held the shield that also prevents or blocks shotgun fire, and holy cow, it is incredibly, incredibly heavy, and so our officers really have to work on their strength. And, I mean, they have enough strength already, but in order to rush into a house and carry that armored equipment with them, with the vest and everything else, it's really impressive. So, I fully support this. This is great. Thanks.
Thank you. I was just curious. I had one question in terms of procedure. Is this something that every officer would have in his or her vehicle, or how many? How do you determine who gets one, who doesn't? The way I wrote the grant, every single officer at the Worcester Police Department will get one of these kits, and will be expected to bring it with them on patrol, to carry it in their car with them. Again, if they leave it on station and they have to go to an active shooter, wherever that may be, having this equipment in the vehicle will be potentially life-saving.
Thank you.
With that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place resolution 2019-16 on third and final reading.
Mr. Sanders has made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, Ms. Warden seconded. I thought you might model that best for us.
I modeled the shield a couple of weeks ago, and that was... That was a lot of work.
Yeah, I'm sure it was. And it's heavy. All right. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any last questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019, day 16 passes. Looking at resolution 2019, day 17, it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, it is slated for three readings. Before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask Mr. Polo to read the title. Before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask Ms. Apollo to read the title.
Resolution number twenty nineteen dash seventeen, a resolution stating to the Wayne County Commissioners pursuant to revised code section seven oh nine point oh three, the services which the City of Worcester would be able to provide for a territory located on the north side of Old Mansfield Road, Township Road forty-six, east of its intersection with McVeigh Road, and contiguous to the corporation limits, and declaring an emergency. William Allen Fong, the third Esquire Agent for petitioner Graham Ford LLC.
And I should point out that this is a perfunctory portion of the annexation procedure in that the city has a certain period of time to send to the commissioners what services, if any, would be provided, should, and the emphasis on should, the real estate been annexed, it doesn't bind us to anything, because ultimately, we can decide whether or not to annex the property or anything, it's just part of the procedure. That being said, Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I'm not sure that there's much more that I need to say.
I'm saving your voice since you're speaking.
Well, thank you. This is another piece that would have come to us a little sooner, but again, due to, just due to general timing of when everything was filed, and when we need to get back to, when we need to respond to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners related to this resolution this evening, I am going to motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, I turn to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other discussion or questions? Again, I think we have thirty days once it's... The commissioners have decided to go forward with it, and things got lost in the shuffle, although I say this is perfunctory, and this type of legislation, frankly, I don't see any reason to clog up the agenda, since we ultimately have the right to decide whether it comes in or not, and like I said, it doesn't bind us to anything, so... Mr. Bastancic?
So I take as the petitioners did not go to the fast track, as the previous...
Right, this is go through the standard procedure.
There will be hearings at some point, too, as well?
Well, the...
If they do decide to.
The commissioners will hold a public hearing, and people that are basically contiguous will be notified, and people can go to the hearing and express their opinion. Then it comes, ultimately comes to the City of Worcester to determine whether we want the property as part of our boundary. Anything else?
Can anyone tell me what the zoning is to the properties adjacent to that? I'm assuming it's industrial?
It's made factory, or I...
Okay, I know we probably can only speculate at this point, but that it would remain in that category?
This is a group that we've been visiting with for over a year now, trying to help in development. It is adjacent to the RBB Baker property. It is a piece that has some decent potential for manufacturing, some level spots on the property, so we've been encouraging Mr. Graham to consider annexing it, because it will bode well for them as landowners, because if they annex in, then they have city services that you want, and things for before they would be outside, and anybody's in the private property, it would probably end up annexing it.
Right.
So yeah, it's something we've been working on internally for a long time.
Thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
Oh yeah, quick question. There's about twelve hundred feet of unimproved road that borders that property. If it would get annexed in, who's on the hook for improving that road at some point?
We would, the city, if it brings it in, would have the service to that road, it's not an improved road.
No, it's not, but when it gets in, would it automatically be, become an improved road? Would we put in?
Yeah, any infrastructure improvements, including the road, would be on the developer's tab, not on...
Well, it goes by the property, but it's not in the property.
We wouldn't improve it, we'd develop the one to improve it, make it improve, and maintain it.
It would just stay as is?
Yeah. And this is, if we digress a little bit, and this kind of relates back to what the mayor was saying about Medina and Sandusky, I lived in Sandusky, I'm very familiar with Perkins Township, which is the parcel that's not in the City of Sandusky. Sandusky and Medina both went, trying to cover their costs on their water and sewer systems, they extended it outside the city limits. Unlike here in Worcester, if we would ever extend it outside city limits, and they're not contiguous to the city, if they're contiguous, they have to annex to get the service. If they're not contiguous, we have them sign an annexation agreement, or pre-annexation agreement, that says if they ever become contiguous to the city limits, they must annex. They went on kind of a reckless, now in hindsight, of continuing to extend water and sewer out in the township without having any of these agreements, so that's why those blocks aren't in the city, and probably will never be in the city, because they got the services that they needed, so there's no incentive, because as you may be aware, townships have no income tax, so... But we've always made sure that if they weren't contiguous, and it's only been in a few occasions that we've extended, I think, some residents out there in the Bad Orf Road area, and that area where their system had, the water system had failed, but we've been very cognizant of not extending the lines beyond their boundaries, and that's how they got sideways, and I don't know, I don't think there's going to be any fix unless they have, can say, we don't have enough capacity to serve those outside the city limits, so that's a little side note to how they got in that situation, so... Anyways, didn't mean to monopolize your ordinance here...
Hold a good discussion.
Or resolution here, sorry. So, any other questions? I bored you enough. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty nineteen day seventeen passes, brings us to our final resolution, which suspiciously looks like another toy for the fire department, and it must be, because I see both chiefs are here, not only Chief Salee, but Chief Murphy's trying to look very small in the corner there. You're not successful, I scouted you out early on in the meeting, so... Anyways, this will be presented, now this is a fun resolution, Mr. Sanders, who's, again, pinch-hitting for Mr. Cavan, and Mr. Cavan specifically asked me to have Mr. Sanders do this one, so... Anyways, before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, who has used his voice a lot, you might need to, you know, hydrate after you get done with this meeting, but I will have Ms. Apollo read the title, if she would.
Resolution number twenty nineteen dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing the fire chief to utilize a cooperative purchasing program and enter into a contract for the purchase of a new fire engine, and appropriate funds, and declaring an emergency.
And I will note, it is budgeted, and Mr. Cavan, if he weren't so sick, he would have loved to have been able to sponsor this tonight, but you get the honor there, Mr. Sanders, and I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, yes, we have the honor of looking at replacing a two thousand and four fire engine, number one thirty-six, that at this particular point in time, since two thousand and four, or sometime shortly thereafter, this vehicle has been evidently plagued with gremlins and a litany of mechanical issues, as we have, as we saw with the information that Chief Salee handed to us here shortly before the meeting, and that information was prompted from a phone call that I had with him at four forty-five this afternoon. Candidly, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is, excuse the pun, a truckload of money, and I just wanted to make sure that, in light of the fact that we were ahead of our normal replacement schedule with this vehicle, I just want to make sure that, you know, that there was just causes with this. And due to the nature of this, I think, if Chief Salee is willing, I'll turn this over to you, and you can give us somewhat of a brief synopsis of the situation.
Sure, thank you, counsel, I appreciate the time. When I became the chief, one of the things we did was modify when we replaced vehicles, and we went from an age-based replacement schedule to a condition-based replacement schedule. So normally, we would replace engines every fifteen years, the quint, which is what is being proposed, which is a fire engine with a small ladder on top of it, every twenty years, and a ladder truck every twenty-five years. When we evaluated our apparatus, this one continuously gets requested to be replaced by our apparatus committee and our staff, because, like Mr. Sanders said, it is plagued by gremlins. Since it was purchased by the city in two thousand and four, it has had ongoing mechanical issues, and it isn't just one particular portion of the truck, it's not the engine, it's not the ladder, it's not the transmission, it's a variety of things. The vehicle has been involved in two minor accidents, where there have been some frame issues that we've addressed. In two thousand and fifteen, we sent the vehicle out, when Assistant Chief Murphy was the acting chief, to get a full overview, checked out hydraulics of the ladders, redone, and get a good clean bill of health. It came back, and since that time, it's still continuously plagues us with small issues. Upon Mr. Sanders' request, we looked into the cost in repairs, and fortunately, Kurt was in town and was able to stop in the office and get me the repairs, and these are just the repairs for this apparatus, since it's been purchased, that City Garage has done, that isn't inclusive of us sending out to WW Williams multiple times, getting the aerial repaired in two thousand and fifteen, the damage from the two minor accidents weren't part of this, this was just what City Garage does. So they're constantly maintaining and fixing small issues that come up, which creates a significant reliability factor with this truck. Plain and simple, the truck is not reliable. An example, just within the past six months, we've had the truck go out to WW Williams because it won't go into pump gear, and there was an issue with our PTO that we couldn't use the aerial truck, or the aerial component to it. We were able to get that repaired for a minimal cost, about three thousand dollars, but it was out of service out of the city for a few weeks. It came back in, and just about a month ago, we had a small fire, fortunately, it was small, but we had a fire around eleven o'clock at night, that was the first due truck into that response district, they arrived on scene appropriately, initiated everything for training protocol, but the pump went into gear, it started to pump, but for whatever reason, it wanted to create sufficient pressure to do suppression activity. Now, like I said before, and when I talked to Mr. Sanders, fortunately, that incident was a small kitchen fire with just some pizza boxes, because there was just enough water coming out of the hose to dribble on it and extinguish it. Now, with a truck at two hundred PSI of pressure, that should have had significant pressure to put out, you know, a roomy contents fire. We went back, did a thorough investigation on it, to find out why, was it a training issue, was it a staffing issue, what mechanical issue, did we narrow it down to try to correct or address, and we couldn't identify that factor, and we can't replicate it. And this is the problem with this particular truck, is there's continuous, small problems, mechanical problems that come up. Earlier this month, as well, we come in with the station, and the headlights are on, batteries are off, disconnected, but the lights are on. So we figure out, we do some diagnostics, can't figure it out, we send it out to City Garage, this is, continues, this is what we do, send it out to City Garage, it gets out there, the lights turn off. So they think that we're just blowing smoke, you know, that we don't know what's going on, they're calling us to come pick it up, Jim walks out, the lights are on. So he goes through his electrical component, checks everything out, and he's unable to thoroughly address why the lights are on. So we put it back in as a reserve engine, we identified possibly a relay, we replaced the relay, put it back in service, it works for a few days, come back in, the lights automatically come back on, and it's just one of these things, and the term gremlins is appropriate, and this has been ongoing since two thousand and four. You know, my job is safety, and that is to ensure that my staff has the safe equipment to respond to, and that our citizens have the equipment that we can safely provide services to them. And this piece of apparatus is being requested to be replaced early, because I don't believe it's safe for our community to have as a first-line unit. We did defer replacing an engine, which would have been requested this year, because it's a solid reserve engine that's been functioning well for us, so I believe its condition is better than what this one is, so I'll defer that for a few more years to be able to replace that at a later time, so that this could be pushed up. Now, we did do our due diligence in specing out the vehicle and looking what the best piece of apparatus would be. We started that after the budgeting process came through, and you guys saw that this was in the budget, and the budget got passed, we brought in demo trucks, we saw what the industry was providing. My apparatus committee did a fabulous job of digging in very deep into what type of vendor we should use, what type of apparatus and the configuration, and that's why I included a draft blueprint on you, because we switched from a rear mount quint to a mid-mount quint, which is the aerial base sitting in the middle of the truck, which actually allows it to be lighter, so hopefully, we'll have reduced preventative maintenance on it, and because of our congested downtown area and smaller residential areas, that truck will be able to maneuver, and will be able to get to that aerial waterway up underneath electrical lines, if need be, to be used. So my apparatus committee did a fabulous job, they narrowed it down, they were able to document apples to apples, and then after they gave us our recommendation to go with this, we brought both vendors back in that we deemed to be the two closest, and brought Jim from City Garage in, and had them go through all the maintenance of it, all the mechanicals, the differences of the chassis, why each one of those was different, who was using aluminum, could sustain a steel, and went in basically, line item by line, to ensure that this was the best vehicle. Mr. Sanders, in our discussion, was, you know, pretty adamant that, you know, this is an expensive cost, and bumping it up in earlier data is a concern, and I agree with him. But I'm going to be the, when this truck was purchased, I wasn't on the fire department, it was pre-my tenure here. I'm going to be here for a long time, so we did our due diligence in making sure that this large of an expense and cost to the city was done correctly, and that we are making the best decisions for the community. And I truly believe that this vehicle, and replacing it now, is in the best interest of everyone, and especially from a safety perspective, of getting it done now, and making sure that we have frontline equipment that is reliable, is pertinent to our service. If there's any questions?
Well, is that a typo? Well, is that a, is that a typo? Because this says it's replacing a 1990 Pierce. Oh, you changed it.
I changed it at five to five.
Oh, at five to five. I only rely on my downloads. I, you know, I, I don't do paper anymore.
I don't.
And the other comment is, have you tried an exorcism?
We haven't, but that, if this does not get approved, we'll have to go down that road.
What do you do with something like, how, how can you in good faith pass this on to another purchaser?
Well, we, we've given to all of the, the vendors, all the mechanical components and all the records, and they've taken it on a trade-in, and, and as I discussed with Mr. Sanders and Cavan, we were anticipating about $10,000 that we could get on the open market through God deals when I looked at what trucks have been purchased in the past 60 days. And I was hopeful for 10,000 coming off the, the market. We did pressure the, both vendors to, to tell them that, you know, we're coming to you to replace this early, this is a concern. You know, I know Andre in the past, and Chief Idler, when he was looking at replacing this, had talked about amortizing and how much life was still in the truck and can we do our due diligence in replacing this? And, and we told that to the vendors, and they came back and said, well, Sutton is going to give us a $60,000 trade-in, and Pierce is going to give us a $25,000 trade-in. And they'll take all that information, convey it, and either sell it, scrap it, or do whatever they deem appropriate to, obviously to, to get our, our market share. So I know when I talked to Sutton the last time they did this, they just purchased it, pieced out the equipment, and then scrapped it. I'm not saying that's what they're going to do with this, but that's what they did because the market is so saturated right now with fire trucks coming off of grants that people have gotten over the past five or, five or so years, that that's what they've been doing.
Well, I, I know the price doesn't shock me because when an ambulance is $500,000 to $600,000, this is a much more sophisticated piece of-
Our engines are about $250,000, but our engines are $500,000 to $600,000. So, but yes, even, even that, those are expensive, and as Chief Fisher and I kind of joke, anytime you put police or fire on something, you know, the price gets kind of bumped up. Unfortunately, it's the case because of all of the standards that they have to, to meet to be public safety grade.
Chief Salee, what type of warranty do these engines come with? And I'm assuming that after 15 years, that had been void for this engine?
Correct. The warranties have all been expired on this particular engine. They come with a varying type of warranty. So you have a one-year bumper, the bumper, your power drain is so much that, you know, hangings can't hear, the aerial is X amount, so it is really dependent on the, on the particular component of what the warranty has on that. And in our book, we have the warranty spelled out. We do have a performance bond included in the quote that they provided us for this month so that we can ensure that we are getting the apparatus that we, we desired. And, and speaking with Chief Murphy on this particular option, this was something that the apparatus committee had voiced concern to the previous fire chiefs when we did take ownership of the, of the Seagrave, that maybe we shouldn't have done that. So we will, we will do our due diligence to ensure we have a correct piece of apparatus. And fortunately, we are recommending Sutton as the vendor who is in Columbus, so if we have any concerns, we have a quick drive down there, we can check the status of it, we can go into the, in the build site and really keep an eye on it to make sure that everything is on the, on the up and up.
Well, Chief, I think you guys have done a lot of homework on this. I mean, I think you're being very financially responsible. You're putting off a budgeted and planned purchase of a piece of equipment to take care of a problem piece that you have today, and, and I know that the citizens of our community, when they call for the fire department, they expect you to be able to show up. So hats off to the work you've done, and I intend to support this.
I appreciate that, and I, I don't want to take that it was me, it was our apparatus committee. They, they put a lot of time and effort into this.
We're going to thank you because they didn't come.
Quick question. Just curious, do they build these per order or do they-
Yes, it's all custom.
It's all custom.
We spec it out, we work with them of what our needs are, and then, you know, they start the build. The build time for this particular truck is 11 to 13 months. So it, it will be another year until we actually get it here, so that is problematic. We're going to keep the Seagrave in the city and keep it as a reserve. We don't want to use it as a first out because of the mechanical problems, but because we have all of our fleet built on redundancy, I need to keep it in our, in the city. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would motion to-
Adopt?
I would motion to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Or Mr. Bestancic? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019 dash 18 passes, and Council expects to have a, be able to inspect and blow the siren when this comes online, okay, chiefs? All right, good enough.
We get a ride.
And concludes our legislative portion. I'll turn to miscellaneous, and we'll start with Mr. Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only things I wanted to add is I wanted to thank our chief for recognizing our Officer of the Year from 2018, and congratulations to Officer Berry and, and his service, his superb service, especially in the area of drug enforcement. I think it's timely, it's critical for the citizens of Worcester, and I think they can be proud and be pleased with some of that work that's going on, a very focused work. And also Officer Telquist on the lifesaving award. It's nice to know that we have officers that are not just here to enforce the law, they're here to save lives as well, so thanks.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I, I agree with Councilman Silvestri, and congratulations, we have a fabulous police force, so very happy with that. And then on a semi-personal note, I'd like to commend Mr. Silvestri on his children who have been sitting here for a very long evening. I'm, I'm sure they've been dreaming of doing something more interesting than sitting in a council meeting, but good job, guys.
We were playing a little tit-tat toe earlier.
Yes, I noticed that the chief was doing a great job of entertaining them.
Yeah.
I only got to use a couple of talks.
That's funny. Mr. Ansel?
Yes, kudos and commendations to Officer Berry and Officer Telquist for their contribution and service to our city, outstanding examples of law enforcement and caring for our community and the people that they serve. And then also, Mayor, a very fine state-of-the-city address this evening. You were right on track, and it's promising to see all the positive, good things and the, the strong momentum we have in the city of Worcester. Thank you.
Mr. Bestancic?
Nothing more at this time.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Just something that came to my attention through some people in our community, they had heard or received notice that the College of Worcester was no longer in their recycling program accepting glass, that Waste Management had notified them that they were no longer going to pick up glass for recycling. Obviously, people that work at the college who live in our community were a little confused since they're still putting glass in the recycling containers for the street pickup. I called Waste Management, had a very lengthy conversation with, with some folks there. The, it's a private contract with the College of Worcester, and since the glass, there's no market for glass right now in our country, they're having to pay to have it removed from Waste Management. So they were opting out of that at the College of Worcester in any of their private contracts. They have a municipal contract they have with the city of Worcester is for all recycling, and they've assured me that they are continuing to recycle the glass. They do have a, a one vendor that they do pay to have it taken away, but they're still recycling the glass, so the citizens, I don't want any confusion, things that are going into the recycling that is not contaminated, again, try to keep things clean and, and separate, but things that are being, are being recycled. So it is a different market for recycling today than it was a few years ago when we entered into our agreement, but it is being recycled, so I just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
And only fitting that you had the most on your plate, we'll give you the last word, Mr. Sanders.
With all that's been said, there's, I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
Okay. Let's see, Mr. Ansel moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We're adjourned.